Good evening and welcome to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. I'd like to read into records a memo from Commissioner Hagan. Madam Vice Chair, please be advised, due to the previous scheduled out-of-town trip, I will be unable to attend tonight's public hearing. Please include this message into the meeting records. Welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the adoption of the text and future land use map amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. The Board would also concurrently consider the proposed rezoning of the property of two of the plan amendments on this evening's agenda. I would now request that the Planning Commission staff begin with the first item on this evening's agenda. Is that you, Melissa?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. The first item we have this evening, item A1, is HCCPA 22-12. That's a Comprehensive Plan Text Amendment to the Capital Improvement Section. And I'll introduce Mr. Diego Guerra, who's going to run us through the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Diego Guerra, Planning Commission Staff. Again, this is the adoption hearing of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22-Tech 12, which is the update to the Capital Improvements Section. A little bit of background, the Capital Improvements Update is part of the Governance Chapter of the Hillsborough, overall Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Update. This is part of the final, fourth and final phase of the major Comprehensive Plan Update. The current context of the currently adopted element includes language on levels of service, financial feasibility, needed public facilities and improvements, coordinating capital improvements with land development, language on the coastal high hazard area. There's also policies on informed public and capital improvement planning, schools and support to transportation improvement. Overall, the update was conducted collaboratively with county staff. And overall, again, approximately 90% of the currently adopted language is carried over into the update through the adopted goals, objectives, and policies. Only approximately 10% of the language is new language to the section. We did reduce the overall element from a little over 160 goals, objectives, and policies to 61 in the updated Capital Improvement Section. Again, this was conducted through eliminating regulatory language, streamlining the language, removing duplication of language that's also found in other parts of the Comprehensive Plan as well. And overall, we went ahead and still retained the important components that currently exist in the section update through update, currently exist in the section through the update and modernization of the various policies as well. The update is consistent with various goals found in the Comprehensive Plan, and we did not receive any objections from any of the reviewing agencies from the state and regional level. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. This is a public hearing. Do we have anyone to speak? Do we have anyone in the audience to speak? It's time, we're going to board discussion.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner O'Nan and second by Commissioner Kemp. Please record your vote. No, clerk, we, we, clerk, we have a roll call, please.
It should be open.
Should be, okay, it's open. Okay, go ahead and record your vote.
Motion carries six to zero.
Your planning staff?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The next item we have today is A2A, which is HCCPA 21-26. This is a future land use map amendment. And Ms. Carla Yanos will be doing the presentation. Thank you.
Carla Yanos with Planning Commission Staff. This is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment for HCCPA 21-26, also known as Valrico Road and State Route 60. This plan amendment is a privately initiated small-scale. It is going, a future land use map change from residential nine to residential 20. And the property is approximately 12.8 acres in size. It's southeast of Valrico Road and State Route 60 intersection. The property is within the urban service area. It is not within the limits of a community plan. And this originally was part of the October 21, 2021 cycle. And on January 13th of 2022, the Board of County Commissioners requested a concurrent rezoning with the CPA. Then on December 15th of 2022, at the public hearing, it was continued by the applicant. So it's brought before you today for either adoption or denial of the Comprehensive Plan. And then we'll hear the concurrent rezoning afterwards as well. The subject site is located off of State Route 60. The majority of this, the uses within State Road 60 corridor is usually non-residential, and you have some residential uses along. There is a public shopping plaza at the southwest corner of State, of Valrico Road and State Route 60. The Brandon Boulevard Shops Plaza is located at the northwest corner. And within the vicinity of the property, there are standalone non-residential uses such as a CVS, Walgreens, Taco Bell, et cetera. Now, south of the property is a multifamily residential development named Oak Valley, and you do have Valrico Forest, single-family residential subdivision as well. Now, the property has, again, frontage on State Route 60. So the next two pictures will show you the entrance of the property. There is a Taco Bell that shares this driveway from, you can see on the pictures. And the next two pictures is a second entrance on the property. It is currently unimproved. Now, the adopted future land use category is residential nine. So as you see on your screen, and there, you also have a bigger blow-up map on your packets. So the area has OC 20, which is located directly to the west. You do have some residential nine and residential six abutting the, you know, the, along State Route 60 corridor. And further to the north and to the south is the res four, future land use category. The proposed amendment is to residential 20. And this is similar to the density and intensity that is permitted on the, sorry, the residential 20, and it's similar to the OC 20, which is located to the west of the subject site. Now, as far as the impacts between the existing and the proposed, under the existing future land use category, the property would allow for 115 dwelling units or approximately 278,000 square feet of non-residential use. For the proposed, you're looking at 256 dwelling units or 418,000 square feet of non-residential use. This is the maximum permitted under the future land use category. Now, both districts do allow for residential. They allow for urban-scale neighborhood commercial and office uses, multipurpose projects, and mixed-use developments. Now, this proposed plan amendment does increase the residential density and non-residential Staff reviewed the request and has found it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan policies. Overall, the request is located in the urban service area. It is centrally located with frontage on an arterial or collective road. It is consistent with the surrounding uses, and it provides for a transition between the commercial and the residential. Now furthermore, we, we've reviewed the agency comments, and none of the agencies currently have objections to the proposed amendment. There is public transit. The closest transit stop is Route 46, which is on Brandon Boulevard. There are a few more routes potentially proposed in the future. It's in the 10-year TDP, unfunded premium map. And as far as the traffic analysis, it was stated in the agency comments that the proposed CPA will not cause a decrease in the level of service. Now, with that said, Planning Commission Staff, Planning Commission Board voted actually seven to zero on January 10th, 2022, and they recommended that HCCPA 21-26 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And they recommended forwarding this recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. That said, I will gladly answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much. This time the applicant. We have three minutes for each applicant to speak.
Just going to pull up the presentation. Do you have the presentations that were provided? And then just go through them. Thank you. To advance, you just hit the next slide.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Christian Yepes with Bel Air Development Group, and we are the party that is under contract to buy the property that we're discussing here this evening. We are a commercial development company that specializes in commercial retail as well as multifamily projects, and have developed projects all over the state of Florida to the tune of about 400 successful projects since 1980. What we're here to ask tonight is for your direction on which way we take this property, either the by right, commercial entitlements that exist today, or if we develop this as a multifamily project that provides the needed housing and much less traffic impact than, and a better transition to the south. We've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in this project thus far, and we are absolutely committed to, to doing this project. In fact, when we first went under contract, our intent was to go commercial. And after much research and much engagement with the community, we've realized that a much more appropriate course of action would be to go with the multifamily route. We want you to understand why we think multifamily is the best choice for everyone, and it's really because we see this truly as a win-win-win. And that is, it's a win for the adjacent neighbors. We've talked to the people most closely affected by this development to the south. We've received many letters of support, signed petitions. We've even engaged with the townhome community there, which you'll hear more about later. Secondly, it is a win for us as the developer. When we compare the two projects, the multifamily route is slightly better. But please keep in mind, it is also a very viable and doable commercial project. If we're, if we're denied here tonight, that's the direction we'll go. We are moving forward, closing within the month, but we're seeking your approval for what we believe to be a more appropriate use. Finally, this is, this is a win for the larger community. We've heard many times about how many people are moving into this area, the desperate need for housing that we have. And this significantly reduces the traffic impact on the roads around by this use versus the commercial use. And you'll hear more from the experts on that later. This is supported by the local businesses, that they want more housing for their employees. Each day, there are, there's a net increase of about 100,000 people that come into Hillsborough County to work. These are people outside the county that are coming in that don't have a place to live in Hillsborough County, whether it's Pasco, whether it's Manatee, whether it's Pinellas. They're coming into Hillsborough County, and there just isn't an option. We believe that this is an absolute win for the community. It answers the questions that the Board has asked us, asked the community of developers to answer, to get affordable, reasonable options for housing in this community. So with that, I'll turn to the next person.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kevin Reali, 401 East Jackson Street, also for the developer here. I'm going to speak just briefly on the history of this site, because it does go back to the previous board, and as the Planning Commission mentioned, all the way back to January 2022, you know, over 18 months ago, which makes it sound like a tortured application, but really, it hasn't been a tortured application. This has been us responding to the Board's wishes along the way. This application received unanimous Planning Commission approval in January of '22. The first delay came at the request of this Board, which was to delay the comp plan amendment so that it could be heard concurrent with the PD so that compatibility could be ensured. After that delay, we filed the rezoning application, which is on the agenda tonight. That was heard by the zoning hearing master in July of 2022, and we had a zoning hearing master recommendation of approval in August 2022. So after unanimous approval from the Planning Commission and the zoning hearing master recommendation, we were set to go to the Board in early fall. Because the dates were set for a land use meeting and not a comp plan amendment hearing, it had to be continued again. It was continued to October 2022 on that date. It was continued again at the request of this Board so that it could be heard concurrently with another item that's on the agenda tonight. That's a separate development project. The Board at that meeting continued to December 2022, but that was after the applicant was able to give input, and the entire applicant team had a conflict in December of 2022 at the city of Tampa. And so in December, the applicant requested a continuance, which was granted, and unfortunately caused us to delay until tonight's hearing. All of this is significant because while this item has never been fully heard before this commission, we understand why those delays were being asked. And so the project has been changed all along the way to focus on compatibility and focus on what was identified as, or what we believe were the Board's concerns. And so the project that we are presenting to you today, that we hope to present to you after this item, the PD itself, is, is adjusted for those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nicole Nougabauer, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, for the record. So now that you've heard kind of how we got here, what are we presenting for you? Tonight, we're here presenting a small-scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment to change the future land use category on about 13 acres of property along State Route 60, from res nine to res 20. Something you're going to hear a lot about tonight is that this project and this property is not a clean slate. Unlike a lot of other projects that we bring before you that are agricultural properties that we are looking to entitle for a multifamily or residential project, this project already has commercial entitlements on it. And that's very significant for you to consider, because now we are asking this Board what they would like to see on this property. This site has always had these by right, commercial entitlements. And this is important, because this means this property was always planned for development. It matters what development is going to go there. Today, the property could be developed as 89,000 square feet of commercial general uses, 15,000 square feet of business professional office, and 2,500 square feet of fast food. For a comparison, this is about the size of an average grocery-anchored shopping center. Today, the project's only required to have a 20-foot buffer to the townhome community to the south, and you're going to hear from our traffic expert that this project will create over 6,000 trips. So what are we proposing today? You heard from Kevin Reali that this Board asked us to come back with a companion rezoning application after this application was originally heard in January 2022. You're going to hear tonight that we are proposing a 256 multifamily unit apartment that will be limited to three stories in height. Now, originally, this was presented as four stories, but we have made this reduction at the request of the community and of this Board. The project is also proposing a 75-foot minimum setback to the townhome project to the south as compared to the 20-foot that is allowed on the property if we built the project it's entitled for today. Now, as I mentioned, you're going to hear that the project that's approved today will create 6,000 trips. But this project that we're proposing will create only 1,800, a 71% decrease in traffic. And I say all of this because this project is different. This property is not a clean slate, and you're going to hear from the community that their main concern is traffic. They don't want any development on this site, but that is not going to be an option. This site will be developed as a commercial project that's entitled today, or as a multifamily project that we are proposing. The commercial project will create significantly more traffic than the multifamily project. And so we think that this project has addressed the community's concerns. Why did your staff support this application? Because this is an area that was planned for higher density, that is consistent with the growth management policies in your Comprehensive Plan. There is sufficient capacity for all urban services, and it's consistent with your Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you so much for your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. David Smith, 401 East Jackson Street, Director of Development Zoning for Sterns Weaver Miller. This particular project, to just spring off of what was previously said, this project is one that you should support for various reasons. One, it's adjacent to commercial already, provides a transition to additional residential properties to the south by including multifamily. It's normal to have commercial, higher-intensity residential, single-family attached, and then you get into the greater community, which is mostly single-family to the south. It's infill development. Infill development, I'll show you in a second, basically is saying, take vacant land that's surrounded by existing development and infill it with appropriate development pursuant to the Comprehensive Plan. We're in the urban service area, we're along transit corridors, and eliminate strip commercial, which is also a goal and objective of the Comprehensive Plan. This graphic shows in red the project site. And all around it, what you see is development. You do not see farms, open spaces, undeveloped land. This is a high-intense commercial corridor. This high-intense commercial corridor is ideal for infill development. It's in the urban service area. Matter of fact, it's well inside the urban service area. It's on a transit corridor. As was stated already, transit is along State Road 60 now, and has a park-and-ride out at Dover Road. Also, it prevents the continued strip commercialization of the corridor. What's shown here is the project site approved for commercial, and all the other commercial projects that are either constructed already or available to be built on with existing entitlements. Goals and objectives of policies of the Comprehensive Plan discourage strip commercialization, and in fact, they encourage high-density residential along arterial and collector corridors as an alternative to such actions. So based upon all the Comprehensive Plan policies that we're consistent with, I think the statement by that I have on the screen from prior hearings from Commissioner Cohen sums it up better than I can actually present. At some point, you know, we have to stick with what we say, which is we're going to encourage new housing development inside the urban service area along major transit corridors, and that is what this is. I think I submit to you, Commissioners, that that is exactly what this is. Infill, transit corridor, residential transitions, design and sensitivity to the community that meets the policies of the plan. Now, if I have any questions, I'm glad to answer them. I'll turn it over to Steve Henry.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Henry, Links &amp; Associates. We did the traffic analysis for the project, and what we've got here before you is graphic that shows the difference in the trip generation between what is approved for the site today, which is the commercial uses, versus what we're proposing. The red shows what is approved, which would be about 6,000 trips per day, versus what we're proposing, which is about 1,700. So it's a 71% decrease in traffic from a daily standpoint. Then if we go to the next graphic, this provides a comparison of both the AM and PM peak hours. Again, the red is the approved, the green is what we're proposing. In the AM peak hour, there's about a 30% reduction from 224 trips to 157. And then in the PM peak hour, there's a difference of about 550, is what the existing would generate, versus what we're proposing, 137, which is a 75% reduction in traffic over what could be built there today based on the existing zoning that is there today. We've also did the analysis for the plan amendment, and as your staff had indicated in your staff report, there's no change in the level of service based on what we're asking for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ross Kirchman with ECP Partners. We are partners with Christian Yepes and Bel Air on developing this property. I had the privilege of growing up in Valrico, and I believe much of who I am today is due to the education I received and friendships I made at Alify Elementary, Burns Middle, and Bloomingdale High Schools, all about three miles from the site. I consider it an honor to be able to develop a high-quality project that will benefit the area that has meant so much to me in my life. We have done extensive outreach with both local business owners and area residents to see if the majority would support the, what we're coming forward to tonight, which is the comp plan amendment and the company rezone. We met in person with the majority of the larger businesses near our site, many of whom have signed letters of support. You can see many of them on the screen up there. The overwhelming feedback we received from these folks was they prefer apartments over commercial on our property. The majority of businesses we spoke to are having trouble hiring and retaining good employees due to there not being enough available quality housing in the area. Additionally, we also met with many area residents, and we believe the people that are most affected, impacted by our proposed development are the Oak Valley Townhome Community, which is located directly south of our property. You can see on the screen. They share the entire southern border of our property. It's approximately an 80-unit townhome community. It's two-story attached townhomes, approximately half of which are owner-occupant, and half of which are currently being used as rentals. We had two separate meetings with Oak Valley Townhomes orchestrated through the HOA, so these were open to anyone in the community to attend. Additionally, we gave our best efforts on three different occasions to knock on every single door in the community for the purpose of speaking one-on-one with any resident that wanted to talk about our project. The number-one concern the residents had was traffic on State Route 60 and Valrico Road. The overwhelming majority of the residents we spoke with prefer we develop an apartment community instead of a retail shopping center because of the reduced traffic and a preference to back up to residential instead of commercial. Through these outreach efforts, we received 14 letters of support from residents of Oak Valley. Thank you again for the opportunity. We are excited to be a part of the Valrico community through this development. And with that, we'll turn it over to Elise.
Thank you.
So this is one of those sites that's hard, because we know that you've received a lot of letters of opposition because of the traffic out there. But this slide really kind of shows the hard truths of the decision that you're making today. First of all, this is a fully entitled, commercial by right site, which will have significant, very significant impacts on the community with over 6,000 trips on the right-of-way. The developer could get permits tomorrow to build this, but you've already heard from them that they think the multifamily is better for them and better for the community. You've also heard that they're moving forward right away. They're closing actually sometime this month. You've also heard about the amount of community outreach that they have done, as well as the support of the townhome community that is directly adjacent to the project. Those are the people that are very directly affected by this development, that do not want commercial development, they would rather have the multifamily development. You've heard the accommodations that the developer is committing to with respect to reducing the height when we go forward to the PD, and we'll be introducing new conditions, because some of the concerns were compatibility. They're addressing those compatibility concerns even further. You've heard from your own professional transportation engineers in the staff report that the development meets the adopted level of service and standards in the CIP element. You've heard from our expert transportation engineer that the proposal will significantly reduce the amount of traffic generated by the project on the site. We have support from local businesses, support for the development, and support from the neighbors that desperately need housing close to their businesses. I think you are all aware of how badly we need housing in Hillsborough County. You've heard from your Planning Commission, you've heard from your planning staff, and from the Planning Commission unanimous vote, that this is consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the Comprehensive Plan. This development is exactly what you keep telling us over and over, you want to see in Hillsborough County. It checks all the boxes, so we appreciate your consideration today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker will have, oh, you're coming, okay, come on. Are you with the applicant, sir?
I am with the opposition.
Thank, no, no, we're not there yet.
Excuse me?
Thank you. Okay, okay, okay. At this time, we're going to have public comment, I'm sorry, at the public hearing, we have the speakers to speak, and each speaker will have three minutes. So I'm going to take them in order, and virtually, we have Heather Frye. She's online staff, you can open up, please.
And if I may, I just wanted to remind all the speakers that we are right now starting the public hearing on the comprehensive plan amendment, so I would ask that the speakers really restrict their testimony to the plan amendment. There will be a separate oral argument subsequently on the major modification on the zoning change.
Thank you. Okay, Heather.
Yes. Okay. My name's Heather Frye. I'm an assistant manager at the Taco Bell, right there on Highway 60 in Valrico. And I think we should do the apartments because we'd have more people close by us that would be able to come and work, and it wouldn't be that far. And that in itself would reduce some of the traffic on 60, because I know when I get off, it takes, well, it's usually a 20-minute ride, probably about 45 minutes to get to where I'm going.
That's why I'm for it.
A point of order, Madam Chair, are we listening to proponent or opponent testimony? I thought you had changed, so I just want to clarify what we're doing.
No. No, we're in a public hearing right now.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Heather.
That was it, that's all I really had to say. I think we should do the apartments there.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Cynthia Lawdon. She's virtually.
Yes, my name is Cynthia Lawdon. I live at 2331 Eagle Bluff Drive in Valrico. My family and I have been residents of Valrico for almost 25 years. I'm here to speak tonight and voice my support of applicants' proposed multifamily development. I'm a patron to many of the retail stores in the area, can speak without a doubt that there's sufficient retail already on the Highway 60 corridor. Many of the retails continue to struggle to remain open as more people are choosing to shop online, and we don't feel that we need additional retail in an area that already is established retail at this time. Many of you may not work or live in that area, but you can certainly relate to the traffic in retail on Dale Mabry, which is very similar to what we experienced on Highway 60. It can take 20 to 25 to 30 minutes to get from that area of Valrico up to the interstate for people to go to work. We understand that local retailers are having a difficult time attracting employees as housing that is affordable is limited. Our community needs more quality rental housing to support employment and also accommodate the influx of people moving into the area, which we all know Florida is a growing state at this time. And as we all know and have personally experienced, times have changed over the past few years due to COVID, a decline in our economy, and a rise in inflation. People's priorities have changed, both financially and personally, and they're looking for ways to save money due to rising interest rates, gas prices, increase in retail merchandise, and food prices. These factors have driven people to look for housing that's more affordable and closer to work. Many people can no longer afford to purchase homes or remain in their home due to high mortgage rates, high real estate taxes, insurance, and expenses to maintain a home. We feel that the applicant's request is reasonable and will add value, it'll enhance our community, and it'll complement the existing retail already in the market. So we are looking for county commission to do what is best for our community. Adding more retail and traffic is not what we're looking for. We need more affordable and quality housing for the people who want to live and work in this community. As a resident of Valrico, I ask for your support and your approval on this project. It's the right decision for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Robert, and I don't want to bunch up your last name. He's virtual. Is Robert on the line?
Yes, Robert is on the line. Robert, can you hear us? Robert Padilla, can you hear us? Madam Chair, he's on the line, but he doesn't appear to be speaking right now.
Okay, we'll come back to him. Amanda Byrne?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, guys. Okay, I am on the call tonight because I am in favor of the apartment community. I've actually been a resident for 29 years, and I am in the industry actually for 11 years in the apartment community business as a property manager. I do know firsthand what a crisis our area is facing with not enough or not enough quality housing for our residents. I would like to see this area being built in our area. Quality rental is needed, much needed, as apartments are due to a convenient proximity to public transit, shopping, jobs in the area. Traffic is a huge issue. I live eight minutes from where the development would hopefully go up tonight after our call, and it takes me literally over 30 minutes to get home, to and from work. I pass it every single day, so I know exactly where it's going to be located. I can't foresee the traffic being increased any more than what it already is. There are several businesses that have shut down with plenty of openings for new businesses in the area, so why would we create a new place of business when businesses are failing as it is? So I would much rather see an apartment complex. It's more ideally and more realistic than a shopping plaza when you see them all over Valrico Brandon area on every single street corner. So I really hope you hear every single person that's on this call that is in favor. We're in a desperate need of housing for all of our residents. Hillsborough County is becoming more popular every single month and every single year. So I really am hoping, and you guys are pushing and hearing the people that are publicly speaking tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Phillips.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I believe he's speaking on the future items. He's not supposed to be on this item.
Okay, thank you. Sharon Bass?
Good evening, Madam Chair. This is Sharon Bass. I'm an attorney who's representing residents there in the area. I'd like to just remind the commission this evening that we are all members of this community, and we certainly all want the best for this community. However, I would also suggest that we have growth management strategies in place, and while this project may ring all of the bells, the county commission really does need to ask itself, is it the right time for this particular project? We're looking at compatibility issues, and I know that you've heard a lot of testimony about that this evening, but in fact, you're looking at a residential neighborhood that is single-family residences and townhomes. And when you consider the characteristics that come with such large multifamily residential areas, they really aren't compatible with the nature of this existing neighborhood. So we are asking simply that the county commission consider what resources are there, look at the traffic situation, look at all of the factors that are laid out in that, in your growth strategy plan and your policies, and consider, does this development really fit the character of the neighborhood? Most folks would prefer to have a nice neighborhood where it's easy to get around in, and nowadays that's not an easy thing to come by. But what's being proposed here, and what I've heard from several of the residents, will not solve that issue. They already have a rez nine. It's certainly not built to the capacity of the rez nine that exists. The neighborhood's fine with a rez nine. All we're asking is that you reconsider going up to a rez 20. That's all I have.
Thank you. In person, we have Charles Booth.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Charles Bothy, and I live at 2303 Highway 60, which is right next to this development, right between where the development at Miller Road is going to go to. I've lived there for 40 years. My neighbors next to me, the Byanskis, have been there for 70 years. When I moved there 40 years ago, Valrico was mainly cow pastures, orange groves, and strawberry fields. It's changed a lot, but there's still a certain rural charm out there. The traffic is bad enough. Highway 60 is a main evacuation route that goes from eight lanes to six lanes at Valrico Road to four lanes in front of my house, right in between these two proposed developments. It's a mess now. We agreed to the residential nine zoning that is going to allow for a couple hundred townhomes, over 200 townhomes, that are basically owned by the people who live in them. And we feel that having three- and four-story apartments where people never have a chance to own their own home is just out of character for our neighborhood. It's going to be devastating to it. I'm not a paid expert witness. I'm not a lawyer. I'm just a loyal citizen, tax-paying citizen, that's been there for all this time, and we've got, I've had, there's quite a few people I know that have written in and sent emails. We've got some people on a petition, almost 50 of them from right around here, right where this is going, who are in opposition to this. We just don't feel that this is right for the neighborhood, and I wish you all would consider that. It's going to devastate our neighborhood the way it is now. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Rodriguez Belcher. I live in the community. My credentials last time were questioned by the attorneys of the development. I am here because I'm a concerned citizen. I've been in Valrico, born and raised for 42 years. We've seen a lot of development. I agree with development. I am a licensed, Florida licensed building contractor who has been working for 25 years in construction, so I'm able to read the maps that are color-coordinated. They brought out a map today that showed or said that there wasn't rural areas in our area, and there are still. We never said we didn't want development. There is going to be development. Cow pastures, strawberry fields have gone, but they go to single-family residents, communities that are not four stories, three stories high. They keep focusing on how we need housing. That's great, we do need housing. But the issue is, is the apartments that we have in our area, and I've written letters showing, using Hillsborough County's website, to show that there's nothing exceeding three stories high in our community except for that commercial building that's five stories high. And the developer said we need to stick to our word. They rezoned it to mixed-use residential nine, which would allow for townhouses, and retail. Now, because the pandemic has occurred, and there's, everybody's changing their mind, and everybody's moving to Florida, money is outplay here. They're going to maximize profits and put our quality of life in danger because they don't live here where I live. They don't walk Miller Road, they don't go to Winn-Dixie and Publix, which are packed. So of course they want housing in those areas because they need more and more people shopping. They don't want, let's see, Amazon grocery store because that's competition. So I didn't say I didn't want development. I want development that's consistent with our Valrico area, our community. And another thing that is upsetting is it is difficult for the community to hear and know and have the legal verbiage to talk at these meetings and to attend. Chuck and I have been to every meeting. I have not seen these developers at every hearing, and it is upsetting because they do not live in our community. So I have a lot of things to say, and I know I've got three minutes, and it's just me and him basically that are here, but we have been here, we have wrote letters. I went door-to-door and got as many signatures. I have an eight-year-old daughter, and I have other things to do, but I've been here.
Thank you so much. This exhaust list, do we have anyone in the audience to speak on this?
Yes, ma'am, yes, Madam Commissioner.
Let me come back to Robert. Can we, staff, can we get Robert on the line now?
I believe that's Robert right now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, that's me. I apologize for any noise in the background, I'm at the soccer fields with my kids. So I am the HOA president of Von Terra on Miller, behind Hungry Howies. I have never been approached by the developers to ask our input for a compromise or even to give suggestions. To say as such that they made a good faith effort to reach to everybody in the community is false in that regard. I represent 90 homeowners, and we are 100% against this development rezoning. Development is part of growth, and I'm for progress and moving forward. We live, Valrico Station is on the other side of our community, and that's two stories. Why has nobody suggested, why don't we model after Valrico Station? Why do we have to build such intense, high-density buildings and almost quadruple the population in an area that's already struggling? I'm okay with not having retail. I would much rather have townhomes in place of that retail. And why the developer hasn't taken that initiative to plan out that space for townhomes is beyond me. I believe that they're trying to pigeonhole the decision if either this or that, and I don't believe that's good faith negotiating or even community involvement. Traffic is a huge issue, and I understand that's a funding, that's a state funding problem, but we have to draw the line somewhere. And I would prefer, I would have preferred the developer come to all the community events, come to all the HOA meetings, and invite us to be advocates for our community to them, and then see how we can coexist, because I'm not opposed to two-story apartments, I'm not opposed to townhomes, but quadrupling the population in such a small concentrated area is not feasible, in my opinion. And that'll be it, Madam Commissioner. And I apologize that I didn't introduce myself at the beginning. My name is Robert Padilla. I live at 212 Roger Lane in Valrico.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, do we have anyone in the audience to speak on this issue for public comments? Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. Max Forghey, 236 Southeast 45th Street, Cape Coral, Florida 33904, member in good standing of the American Institute of Certified Planners for 30 years. I am here on behalf of my client, Charles Bothy, and his neighbors. I'm trying to address only the legislative issues, in other words, the Future Land Use Map Amendment. Mr. Smith said you need to stick with what you say. I agree. The ideal place to begin is to consider whether the existing Future Land Use Map designation was reasonable to begin with, and my clients contend that it was, and then to proceed to consider whether the proposed change would be in the public interest. The Board of County Commissioners is under no obligation to approve The Board of County Commissioners is under no obligation to approve either of these two applications. Furthermore, the Board is free to deny these applications without fear that Hillsborough County will be subject to lawsuits or damages. This is not a continuance of existing rez 20, as was suggested by an earlier speaker. This rez 20 does not touch an existing rez 20. It almost does. So it's not a continuance. The county's comprehensive plan would be drastically altered by imposing the very intense RM 20 designation, where the RM 4 and RM 9 have historically been designated, and would do so to the detriment of Mr. Bothy and his neighbors. You've heard from them on that. The next item is compatibility. It is defined in Florida Statute, Section 163.3164/9, as meaning a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time, such that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted directly or indirectly by another use or condition. That's the statutory definition. The impact of this development on Mr. Bothy and his neighbors would be considerable. Nothing they do impacts the existing property or the proposed development. I recommend two findings of fact. The first is that the proposed modification should be denied because the proposed actions are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and specifically, the existing flume designations of rez 4 and rez 9, which are in place, and that the proposed flume amendment should be denied because it create...
Thank you so much.
10 seconds, please. Request 10 seconds.
Board.
Because it would create a long-term incompatibility of use, as defined in Florida statutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in the audience? Public comments? Because that exhausts the list. Okay? Applicant oral arguments have three minutes. So if you have more than one speaker, you can split within the three minutes, okay? The three minutes, the max.
Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver Miller. We've discussed traffic issues already. Obviously, this is commercial versus the multifamily that we're proposing, and you've already heard that the traffic generated would be far greater with the commercial. I understand that the neighbors don't want their community to change, and this is a vacant piece of property, but this isn't going to stay vacant. There was a suggestion that it would be more appropriate to have single-family homes here. This is along State Road 60. I mean, if you look at the map, you can see, well, the map just went away. It is built out with commercial development, so single-family isn't appropriate. In fact, in your record, your own staff said that single-family would not be appropriate along State Road 60. You know, the developer has gone over and above to try to make this compatible. They're reducing it to three stories. Ms. Belcher said, "Nothing in our community is above three stories." That is what we're proposing today, consistent with what is in the community. You know, we listened to the community when we made up this plan, and we also listen to each of you. Commissioner Kemp, you've said over and over, you want to see developers bring these infill projects in the urban service area on transit corridors, right? We think about these things when we, as developers, come and select sites. Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, you've said recently, and you've said for a very long period of time, you want us to listen to the community, and we have done community outreach. We have modified our plan consistently, which you'll see in the next hearing, and this further reduction to three stories in height is to address the concerns about compatibility. We have been listening. Commissioner Wostel, you've said that you do not like apartments, and I understand. But this isn't just any apartment. This is an apartment in the right location at the right time, and it's also on a piece of property that has by right entitlements today. And so it's unique, and it's different. Commissioner Owens, I know this is your district, and I know that you have read each and every letter that has come before you today, and I know that this is going to be a very hard decision for you. But if you break those letters down into the concerns, it's trafficking compatibility. And we have worked so hard to address those concerns, so I hope that you will allow us to get to the next hearing and look at the project. Look how we've had thoughtful design and taken those things into consideration. Commissioner Cohen, we've already, you know, talked about you, so you don't get a quote. We just really would appreciate your vote of support or continued dialogue on this matter, because we really have worked very hard, and we think that this is a really appropriate project in a really appropriate location. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, board members, just to be reminded, the vote on the adoption of CPA 2126 should occur after oral arguments have been held on MM 22-0862. And now, I'm going to turn it back over to Melissa, the planning commissioner, to you. On the next one. At the clerk. It's going to be...
Actually, I will turn it over to Mr. Brian Greedy, if that's okay. We'll handle the zoning next, correct?
Yes, and we'll also need swearing of speakers at this point.
I was going to swear in out there. No member speaks.
Please stand right to your right hand, and repeat after me. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing left of the truth? All right, thank you.
Commissioner's Brian Greedy, Hillsborough County Development Services. The next item on the agenda is Item A2B. This is major mod application 22-0862. HTV could turn the Elmo on, we have some graphics. Again, this is a request to rezonate parcel that's located in the East Brandon, Valrico area, the southeast corner of Valrico, South Valrico Road and State Road 60. Next one. The request is rezoned existing PD that's approved for 89,000 square feet of commercial general uses, 5,000 square feet of residential support uses, and 10,000 square feet of business professional office uses to allow, to modify, to allow for a 256 multifamily unit, 256 multifamily dwelling unit project with 2,475, 2,475 square feet of commercial uses. Based on the surrounding development pattern in the area and consideration of the adoption of the proposed rez 20 plan category, staff did find this request compatible, and is recommending approval subject to conditions. Planning Commission found it consistent, and the hearing officer did recommend approval. And staff's available for any questions.
Thank you. We have applicant oral arguments. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you. As a housekeeping matter, we have some additional conditions to submit into the record if the board chooses to accept those. It would be a condition that would limit, sorry, Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson. So before we start our presentation, we would like to submit a condition into the record that limits this to three stories, if acceptable. May we submit that, Madam Chair?
Board? Yes.
Thank you. And give one to the clerk, please. So you know where this property is located. We don't need to go over that. It is located within the urban service area. It is located, obviously, on, in the Brandon Overlay District. That's a district that actually has design standards, and so this, any new development in this area would have to comply with those design standards, which would help aesthetically, whether it's commercial or whether it's multifamily. We talked a lot about infill, but I just want to go over this map again, because we talked about whether this community was rural or not. And I know that some areas of Brandon and Valrico are rural, but if you look at this area, you can see everything in red that is existing commercial development. It is all up and down State Road 60. And so this area itself is not rural in any way, shape, or form, as far as rural is concerned. There is, it's very important, because since it's already entitled for commercial uses, the proposed project breaks up the commercial strip center. You heard in the last hearing that one of the goals of your comprehensive plan is not to have continuous strip commercial. And so this project would break that up with multifamily. Obviously, the adjacent zoning and uses, there is a car wash, and a CVS Pharmacy, and a Burger King, and a gas station directly to the north. To the south is a PD, that's the existing townhomes, the Oak Valley Townhomes. To the west, there are Valrico Commons, which is a retail shopping center, including a Publix. And to the east is Mr. Bothy's home. He is actually on State Road 60. So this is the existing approval, and if you just look carefully, I just want to note a couple of things. In addition to the pretty significant commercial development, the 20, there is only a 20-foot buffer. The property could be built right up against this property line today. And I think that's really important, because you'll see that we have changed that quite a bit in our development proposal. We are providing, in the project, 256 multifamily units. There, we can't change the slide, but we are now proposing all three-story buildings. We have to stick to the slide that went before zoning hearing master. And there are 75-foot minimum setbacks, as opposed to the 20-foot setback along the southern boundary. So we had thoughtful design, and we pushed the buildings up against the existing commercial away from Oak Valley at their request. This just shows you the single-family homes, and how far away from this development some of the single-family homes that exist are. You can see 325 feet away, that's Mr. Bothy, he's the closest. But a lot of these other single-family homes are quite a good ways away. Before I get there, I'm going to have Steve Henry, just a moment, talk about the trips again, just for this record, to create a record.
Steve Henry Lingston, Associates 5023 Westlaw, Tampa 33607. Has indicated previously that the site is currently zoned commercial. This graphic provides a trip generation comparison of what the current zoning would allow versus what we're proposing. Again, red is the approved, green is the proposed. This would represent a 71% decrease in traffic for the daily standpoint, and these graphics are the AM and PM peak hour. Again, red is the approved, green is the proposed, a 30% reduction in the AM trips, and a 75% reduction in the PM trips.
I want to go back for just a moment, because I want to point out a couple of other things on the project. The area in white up in the northwest corner is the existing Taco Bell. That's there today, so that will stay as part of the development. You can also see that there is a stormwater pond, quite a large stormwater pond, on the southeastern side, and we designed that specifically as a physical separation from the existing single-family homes to the development. So we did spend a lot of time thinking about setbacks and buffers. There's also a lot of trees along the perimeter, and so we've designed the site so that we're able to retain as many of those existing trees and canopies as we can when we move forward with the development. So here's another point that I think is really important. We had full access on, we preferred exit-only on Valrico Road, and that's what we proposed originally, and staff said that we had full access on Valrico Road. Where did we end up, Steve? Full or exit-only? So, we were remanded back, I believe. I'm going to get the two confused, so, but we did change on the final site plan, exit-only, at the request of the neighbors, because they were very opposed to the full access, even though staff requested that. So that's another change that we have done to this plan, to try to accommodate the concerns about traffic on Valrico Road. Oh, it does? Okay. We are not asking for any waivers at all to this. We are asking for a renewal of the waiver of commercial locational criteria. It already exists for the development as it is today, and because this is technically a major modification, we have to ask permission for that again. Development Services has recommended approval of this application. Planning Commission has found the project consistent. The project is consistent with the county's vision for Brandon. It is consistent with a comprehensive plan, and as you heard, all goals, policies, and objectives, you'll hear that from Melissa Leinhart, and the project is compatible with the surrounding uses. The zoning hearing master did recommend approval, and we do believe that this project will provide much-needed residential in the area, and we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just a point of clarification. I don't believe that we have the access limited...
Am I merging deals?
On...
I'm sorry. I'm merging 26 and 27.
Can you let Adam speak?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a full access point on Valrico Road, and there is no, there is no limit to enter or exit only. Just wanted to clarify that for the...
Thank you. Oral arguments. It's limited to the parties of record?
Just, if I may, real quick, just noticed that all but one of the people who are listed as prior signups, both virtually and in person, are not parties of record. So as people come up or recognize, I'll let you know if they are a party of record to participate at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Louis Reyes?
He is not a party of record.
Okay, thank you. Heather Fry?
Not a party of record.
Cynthia Lorn?
Not a party of record.
Amanda Byrne?
Not a party of record.
Sharon Bass?
Not a party of record.
Charles Booth?
Yes. He may speak.
Charles? Is he here? I know he was here.
Charles Bothy, 2303 Highway 60, Valrico. Like I said before, I've been there for 40 years, and I do not feel this is compatible with the neighborhood. I know people need a place to live. It's already zoned for townhomes, where people, Valrico is made up of most people who own their own home. And high-rise apartment buildings are for people who just rent. The neighborhood is, I know it's not rural anymore, but there still is a certain country charm to being out there. I mean, I've been there for so long. I just wish y'all would consider that. We don't want to live in downtown Tampa. Not that there's anything wrong with downtown Tampa, but we just don't want multi-story apartments. We'd like to have people that are there that's consistent with the neighborhood. That's why I moved there 40 years ago, and want to retire there. And it's not just me. We've got a lot of people who have signed petitions and have written into the commissioners in opposition to this. So I hope you take that into account tonight, and it's not just about money and making money and having more residents there in rental apartments. We'd like it to be consistent with what the neighborhood is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Proponent testimony. 10 minutes. Proponent testimony. No, this proponent, proponent testimony. We don't have any...
We sort of skipped ahead to opponent with Mr. Bothy, but it's okay. At this point, we can just continue with the oral arguments together.
Okay, Heather, you can come on. Heather, you can come to the mic. Heather, you can come to the podium, please.
And Ms. Belcher is a party of record?
Okay.
I am not an attorney, so I don't know all this stuff. But I do know this. I got this request for...
Please, your name for the record.
I'm sorry. My name's Elizabeth Rodriguez Belcher. I live at 406 South Miller Road. When we got our letters, it says adapted future land use, residential nine. There's barely, it doesn't even mention commercial use on that paper. Then they want to go from residential nine to residential 20. They keep saying, "We have a housing crisis," right? But this is not all commercial, and there is single-family on State Road 60. There is rural pieces of property on State Road 60. There is no rez nine in our, excuse me, rez 20 in our area. By all the reports that were sent, and all the color-coordinated maps, if you look at the... them, there is no res 20. The apartments that we have and the townhouses we have, if you look at it, if you go through the Hillsborough County Property Appraisal, you go through every single apartment in our area, 88 units. Out of those 88 units, how many are two stories? Out of this one, 88 are two-story. Out of 82 units, two stories, 58 units are two-stories. Three stories, 24. The majority are two-stories. There's height requirement issues here. There's commercial issues here because they're not saying, they're focusing on that, we want commercial. That's not true. I want single-family resident or townhouse, and I want it to be consistent and comparable to our area. I did the research. I sent it to the commissioners. I went through every single apartment complex in our area. This is, their project is maximizing it to three stories now because it was four before, but it's maximizing it. It is not compatible to our area. There is nothing res 20 in our area. They did compare it to Publix, which is OC 20. That's not the same comparison. Do you think that Publix is going to sell to build apartment complexes there? How can we compare those two properties together? We can't do the real comparison. Drive down there, look, and compare it to the facts that we have in Hillsborough County. We want shorter, the, the single-family is restricted by code to 35 feet high. These are going to tower over us. They're going to build all three stories. They're not going to do a mixed-use, like, or mixed-height like all the other apartments in our area. They're going to maximize. There's too much, our roads can't take it. I went to the town hall meeting, everybody in the community complains about traffic. Our roads, we have no funding. There's no funding for roads. We need 60 to be widened before you put three-story apartments in there. To get out of Publix is a nightmare. To get out of Windexy is a nightmare. I went to Chuck's house, there was an accident right there in front of his house that pretty much happens every single day because people want to get home in a timely, safely manner. They want to go home, but that is a parking lot. I thought maybe I should stop on 60 yesterday and just hold my petition and go to the parking lot of 60 and ask people, do you think that we need a higher-density project in this area? They probably would have said no because they were parked on 60 when that's supposed to be a state road, an evacuation road, a road that is an artery from Tampa to Valrico to get us to our homes. There's issues with roads and there's issues with heights and tripling density. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Opponent? Anyone else?
Madam Commissioner, this is Robert Padilla again.
This is, Mr. Padilla? Not a party of record, so.
Okay. County staff, can you mute the line, please? Can you mute the? No, talking of person up, it's on the line. Go ahead, Mr. Max. Go ahead. Thank you.
Again, Max Fordy, I've given you my address. You have a copy of my resume and the AICP Code of Ethics. We, in the earlier case, we addressed legislative issues. Now we turn to the quasi-judicial issues. That's why we were sworn to tell the truth. This is a, a zoning amendment, and all zoning amendments in the state of Florida are bound by the Brevard County versus Snyder case. I addressed that in my report. I tried to do one report on all four cases for your convenience. Briefly, I want to address the experience that Mr. Bothy and Ms. Veltzer have had at these previous hearings, including the hearing examiner. The agendas are as long as 16 cases. I have, in my travels in Florida, never seen a hearing examiner that heard more than two or three cases on one docket. I'm not saying that that is unlawful. I'm saying that it's not a good way to treat clients and constituents. These long dockets work contrary to the intent of the quasi-judicial proceedings and are a source of frustration to neighboring property owners. There would be a greater-than-fourfold increase in densities and intensities of use which are not currently supported by the future land use map. That's a part of the decision you're going to have to make. I recommend two additional findings of fact that the proposed major modifications should be denied because they would reinforce a spot amendment to the future land use map and would create spot zoning on the county's zoning map, and that well-established entitlements already exist on the subject property. And there is no compelling justification for their proposed amendment, which can be supported by competent and substantial evidence, which is required for amending a property's zoning per the Snyder's standards. I, I want to say that I, I have found, and I say this respectfully, because I've always found that Hillsborough County has a, a highly competent and professional staff. But your procedures, especially the, having hearings on these items at 11 o'clock at night and restricting testimony in opposition to a very few minutes, does not serve the public interest. I, I say that respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, any other opponent to speak?
Yes, Madam Commissioner, this is Robert Padilla again.
I'm sorry, Robert, you cannot speak on this issue at this time. Thank you so much. Okay, we have a rebuttal by the applicant. You have five minutes.
Elise Batzel, Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street. There was a comment that's talked about, we've talked a lot about ownership versus rental. When you're in a rezoning context, it's the use. It's multifamily. So the form of ownership isn't part of the decision today. It's the type of development, which would be a multifamily development, which could be townhomes, it could be apartments. We are telling you that it's going to be apartments here at 256 units. With respect to renters, half of the people in Oak Valley that are directly to the south are renters. I am a renter. So I have chosen to be a renter now in, at this stage in my life. And I think there's a misconception about who renters are, that somehow they're bad people and they bring something to the table that is not desirable. But I will tell you, that is not the case in this day and age. I heard a lot about, I, I think the gentleman in blue referred to RM. This is actually residential categories in Hillsborough County. RM is actually the City of Tampa Regulations. I just wanted to clarify that. With respect to compatibility, the old commissioners have heard this a lot, the new commissioners may or may not have, but when you are looking at technical matters, like traffic and like compatibility, those are things that expert testimony becomes competent substantial evidence. Neighborhood opinion, my opinion, it doesn't matter. That's not substantial competent evidence. If I say I think it's going to be more traffic, that doesn't have weight amongst what you're talking about today. It has to be on a technical matter. If it's an opinion, it has to be rendered by an expert. And your expert, traffic engineers, have said that, have shown you the differences in traffic, that this is going to generate thousands of additional trips. They use ITE, which is standard methodology. Your planning staff, the zoning hearing master, the planning commission, they have all made the determination that this is compatible and consistent with the surrounding uses, consistent with a comprehensive plan. They're your experts on the technical matters of compatibility. And I want to talk about one more thing because I think it's really important for this rezoning hearing. And we don't always talk about it, but I think it's important here. When you have existing commercial entitlements on a property, when you, when the applicant comes in, we have the burden to prove by substantial competent evidence that we are consistent with the procedures in the Land Development Code, and those procedural requirements, and consistent with a comprehensive plan. And Florida law says we do that in one way. As soon as your staff and the zoning hearing master have recommendations of approval, we have met our burden. Now, we've done more than that tonight. We have given you a lot of additional testimony, additional experts. And then the burden shifts back to the county and to this board to look at any substantial competent evidence that was put on the record tonight as to why you would keep the existing entitlements. And that means the commercial development, right? So it's not, do you want this project or not? Your decision is, was there substantial competent evidence on the record by which you could keep the commercial development? And does that accomplish some legitimate public purpose? That's your job tonight to determine for this quasi-judicial hearing. And I haven't heard anything. I've heard that people don't think it's compatible, but with respect to keeping the existing commercial, there has been no testimony. In fact, there has been testimony that directly says that the commercial has more significant impacts on the neighborhood. So I'd appreciate it if you would think about that. We are available to answer any questions that you have. We have thrown a lot of information at you at night, this, tonight, and we appreciate all of the time listening to all the testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Planning Commission staff?
Yes, ma'am. I will ask Ms. Carla Yanos to read into the record from the zoning hearing master meeting. Thank you.
Okay, I have the right one. All right. So this is major modification 22JAS 0862. The subject property is 13.65 acres located at 2301 East State Road 60. It's at the southwest, southeast quadrant at the intersection of State Road 60 and Valrico Road. The property is within the urban service area and not within the limits of a community plan. To the north, northwest, and southwest of the subject site is residential six future land use category, which allows six dwelling units to the acre. Office commercial 20 is found to the west of the subject site and typically allows 0.35 floor area ratio for retail commercial and up to 12, 20 dwelling units to the acre. South, southeast, northeast, and east of, of the subject site is residential four future land use category, which allows four dwelling units to the acre. Subject site is vacant except for a single-family home. And on the northern portion of the property, it contains a vehicle rental service. To the west of the property are two drive-through restaurants, a pharmacy, a gas station, and a full-service car wash. To the east, southwest, and southeast is single-family and undeveloped land. To the north is a sit-down restaurant, a drive-through restaurant, as well as a mobile home park community. Northwest is another gas station, pharmacy, and another drive-through restaurant as well. The applicant requests for a major modification to Plan Development 03-0644 to develop 256 multifamily dwelling units and keep the existing 2,475 square feet of non-residential use where the Taco Bell exists. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan policies and is compatible with the surrounding uses. The general vicinity is mostly commercial-intensive uses along State Road 60. And further, the development pattern transitions from medium-density residential. The nearby commercial is mostly retail-oriented with a floor area ratio between 0.08 and 0.23. The residential development surrounding the site is mostly composed of quarter-acre lots. Again, Planning Commission staff has reviewed the request for consistency with the comprehensive plan. At this time, overall proposed major modification would allow for a development that is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future land use settlement for unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Based on the information presented, Planning Commission staff finds the proposed major modification consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and subject to the conditions proposed by the Development Services Department. I'll stand if you have any questions.
Thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the proposed major modification of Plan Development 03644, which is approved for 89,000 square feet of commercial general land use, 5,000 square feet of residential support use, and 10,000 square feet of business professional office land use. The property is designated residential nine by the comprehensive plan. The applicant has applied for a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use category to residential 20. The comprehensive plan amendment will be required to be decided upon first, and then the rezoning application can be considered. The zoning hearing master stated that the major modification request proposes to eliminate the majority of the non-residential square footage with only approximately 2,475 square feet remaining. And the modification will result in the entitlement for 256 multifamily dwelling units. The zoning hearing master found that the proposed modification for the elimination of the majority of the commercial, general, and business professional office entitlements with only the existing Taco Bell remaining, along with the development of 256 multifamily dwelling units, will result in a significant reduction in the amount of traffic that can be generated from the site. The zoning hearing master concluded that the proposed modification is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code and recommended approval.
Thank you. We're going to board discussion now. Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to thank the, the applicant as well as extremely competent counsel that's here today, as well as the proponents and opponents. This is one of these, these tough deals where this makes this job really, really difficult as a county commissioner. And I, I, I think the commissioners here know, there's not anybody here on this dais that knows this area better than me. I grew up on Miller Road. I am a son of Valrico as well. I also went to Burns and Bloomingdale High School. So, and this is very, very close, as the commissioners know, to the urban service area line. That, that is first, one of the red flags. The other thing is, I think it's very important to have a distinction of the difference between Brandon and Valrico. They are two very, very different communities. Brandon is a lot more urbanized. I think a product of some really bad planning, of that whole concept. We got to put people somewhere, which I think is absolutely horrific planning when we just take the position, people are moving here, we got to put them somewhere. I disagree with that. I think that we need to plan appropriately. Otherwise, we get into the same situation we are now in many parts of East and South County with roads, infrastructure, and schools that haven't caught up. One of my, one of my big concerns, well, one thing I want to make sure that's clear also to this board is that may not be familiar with this part of Highway 60. It's, it's a half-dog bone, basically. So when you get to Valrico Road, you have to merge in very, very dangerously onto Highway 60, or in between Highway 6, Valrico Road, excuse me, and Miller Road. And then you kind of dog bone out onto Miller Road. Miller Road is a two-lane road and is one of the most dangerous roads, again, in Valrico. I have a real concern with the ingress and egress on how you would get into these multi-unit properties. The portion of Valrico Road, first of all, is, is extremely busy. I, I had the pleasure, as many of you all will know, I, I had an open primary. I have knocked on every single door, from Carriage Park to Miller Woods to Brentwood Hills. This area impacts not just Valrico, it impacts Sefner, it impacts Plant City. This is the main connector from, from Valrico to Plant City. It affects Dover and so many of the surrounding areas. It's actually another way to go down Valrico Road to avoid Lithia Pinecrest. It actually meets Lithia Pinecrest as well. So I, I have a lot, a lot of concerns with this particular development, as, as I echoed, as I echoed before. I, I agree that we should never have single-family homes here. It, it definitely, that, that's not what I'm saying, but I, I do agree that the, the existing zoning as it is, is more compatible with, with the surrounding area. Again, when you take into account the traffic concerns, and I understand these traffic studies, we, I've already talked till I'm blue in the face about these traffic studies and the, the impact that, that these res 20s have compared to commercial. But my also issue is with height, scale, and structure here. There are, there are some surrounding communities like Valrico Forest, the gentleman that made testimony here, where even three stories really, really, really concerns me. So, you know, I, I'm going to sit back and listen to a lot of the commissioners, but, but I will say that this is my district. And, and while I appreciate the applicant and the, the, the great job that the applicant's counsel has made, has done today, this planning right here, this road is already known. When people drive by, they kind of laugh at it. There's a four-story skyscraper, we call it, that has never been completed on the other side of the road. There is no walkability here. I can tell you that this is one of the most dangerous spots in East County. And, and again, I want to reiterate to the whole concept of let's put people somewhere. I promise you, East and South County is doing it. Commissioner Myers, drive around, drive. Commissioner Myers, drive around, drive down 301, drive down Brandon, you will find apartment after apartment after apartment. And again, I have nothing against people that lease. I've leased in my life, and I want to be very crystal clear that, hey, listen, I have no problem with creating an environment where people can become tenants and lease. What I take issue with is that this is so close to the urban service area line with no real public transportation. I have real traffic concerns with the bottleneck that's there and as well as the height. So based on the compatibility, I am not going to be for this particular project, but I'll sit back and listen to what other commissioners have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp.
Yes. I have been through, I don't know how many extensive hearings on both this and the next one coming up over and over again. And I, and I will explain a little more, but I couldn't agree with you more, and I have repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly expressed that at these hearings, that I have, I've been out there, I've looked around. It's, first, I am, you know, the rez nine looks like a good future comp plan category to me, and one that should be, and I've maintained that all along. And if commercials to be built there, commercials to be built, you know, let's do it. You know, the trip generation, and I've talked about that before, and this is just classic, because what you have is a lot of development, as you know, Commissioner Owen, you have development mostly going west. To the east, you're at the edge of the service line, urban service line, except you're not anymore because that just got broke open a few years ago for a project that couldn't be built ever as it was, and now it's open for development. But we are still in an area that is so far from everything else. And when you talk about trip generation, if you put a, if you put people living on this, more, if you add density and have people living on this, they're bringing all these cars, because that's practically what, the only thing that's available there, they're bringing all these cars, and they're going on to 60, and they're going predominantly west and adding to traffic. If you put commercial on there, you have maybe five or six times that many cars coming to the commercial development there. So it is like generating more traffic, but you're not having more people, you're having people that are already using that road, and they're attracted to that spot at the very edge. And it really is the edge of the urban service area, pretty much from what I can tell. The heart, end of the line stop that's there is, it's, the area looks more like it's like farm stand than the heart transit station, and the, it's hourly service. And it, even though you can say we're on the 10-year TDP Transit Development Plan, but, you know, we've been on that for a long time without being able to provide any greater service at that area, and I find it really disturbing. Also, this rez nine is a good, that's a good density, I think, and I've agreed with Commissioner White about tapering down as you get to the edge there and not going with these intense densities that are, I just think, inappropriate at this edge of the urban service line. And I am a big supporter and have been of transit, of densities, of infills in other more appropriate areas. And what I've said before about this was not characterized correctly, but I have, I have been when the place is right. I don't think this is the right place. It's at the edge of the urban service line, that's what I've said over and over again. And I appreciate the speakers that come. I do think it has some country charm left there, and I do think it is, you know, that's, it's really, really far out where we're not, where we really can't, you know, I just don't think we should be adding these kinds of densities at that spot so far out. I said at one point, unless they were going to build a village, maybe I could think about that, and I really could, if that was going to, if somewhere out there, they wanted to do a village like we have been trying in Wy Mama without getting, but, you know, this, you know, if you wanted to put it in some kind of cohesive place where you, where that could be, but this, this I just don't think does that or does what we want to do. So I also will not be supporting this, just, and haven't at any time.
Thank you. Commissioner Wausser.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would congratulate the opponents. You were very prepared and thorough, and also the applicants and the legal counsel. And I would just like to clear up that I do not believe that leasing, the people that are leasing are bad. I happen to love everyone, just to be clear. Thank you very much. That's it.
I just have one comment to the applicant. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
After hearing the comments from the citizen, is it possible that you all could work with an RS nine? You know, when they're saying that they want townhouses there and all, I'm just asking.
Hi. That's a great question, and thank you for asking. Unfortunately, as you've heard, construction prices have gotten so high that the only way economically to develop multifamily today is three-story. Really, two-story product is not economical compared to commercial, unfortunately, but that's a great question. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ross Kirchman, developer.
I think Owen was first, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be very brief. I don't agree with, respectfully with the analysis of, that's been presented here. I think the staff report is correct, and I would just say that a major commercial big-box development plus 86 residential units with three times as much traffic does not seem to me to be desirable over what is being presented as part of this proposal, and I think the reduction from four to three floors really brings it, brings it more into line. I just think that what's entitled there, I just would reiterate to everybody that we are not starting from scratch. This is something that is already entitled, and it has enormous entitlements already on it. And the only thing I would say about the urban service area is, it may be close to the line, but the urban service area is places where we have invested in the public infrastructure to support residential development. So, you know, it's not a question of throwing up housing in order to attract people. We don't have enough housing as it is, and we've already invested in public infrastructure to support housing in the inside of the urban service area. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners, for your comments, and, you know, although I respectfully disagree with my colleague here, I, you know, I think one of the big issues is, and the difference of philosophy could be, you know, I do feel like we're jamming people in close to the urban service area, and I do agree that we have to have some form of planning in harmony from the urban core as we get close to the urban service area. I think that's just good, smart planning. And unfortunately, I think that this violates that concept and something that I believe in too. So with that said, I'm going to move for denial based on 1.4, the future land use element, and lack of compatibility because the proposed CPA violates the harmony and surrounding area and violates the height, scale, structure, and increase density.
Just a point of order, that was a motion on the comprehensive plan amendment.
On the comprehensive.
There will be a separate motion needed and a vote following the action taken on the plan amendment. Second motion and vote will be on the rezoning. Zoning modification.
Okay. So you want to do the second one first?
A second.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Owen and second by Commissioner Wausser. Please record your vote.
Motion failed three to four, or three to three. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and Myers voted no.
Okay, so now we'll take, have a motion for MM 22-0862.
Point of order, I think they may have, you may have read it back wrong, the, how the vote tally was, just, I'm just curious what the, what the names, yeah.
Can you put the vote back up, please?
And maybe restate it.
So I would now ask.
So can we go back to the, the motion for CPA 2126, what we should be voting on first?
And then? Yes, I understand that was the motion that was on the floor for the CPA. And if the motion was failed to deny, I would ask that the motion be made to approve.
Okay.
Go ahead, finish.
I'll move approval.
We don't have a second, so that motion dies.
I'd just like to state for clarity that for the vote count, it was failed three to three. Cameron Sepeda, Owen, and Myers voted no. Cap Owen and Foster voted yes.
Okay, well then, I voted no on my, on my motion for denial. Is that what, what you're saying? No, no, yeah, yeah.
That was, that was correct. Point of order, just, or for clarification, just so, the, in order for this to approve and move forward, it would need five votes of support, correct?
Yes.
So, right, so.
So the motion failed, I mean, the motion and for the vote on the adoption, the ordinance for the adoption of CPA 2126 failed, because it requires five votes. Okay, so now we'll take a motion for MM 22-0862. Is that correct? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Well, I can't move approval of that because the thing just died, the amendment just died, so somebody's got to move.
Yes, can I just make, I just, I'm sorry, the way we have typically handled these is, if there is a failed motion to approve, that, and it fails. In this case, we had a failed motion to deny. The presumption is that it wouldn't, given the votes, that it wouldn't pass a motion to approve, but for purposes of the record, that, that would complete.
I made one, and no one seconded it.
I know.
I'll second Commissioner, Commissioner Collins. For formality, we need the denial of the approval, if that's what happens.
Problem is, you can't second a motion that you're going to vote against.
Oh, okay then, that's right.
So I'll move for denial of the rezon. Can I do that?
That, yeah. May I?
But I'll make the motion again to approve.
I would ask for a subsequent vote on the motion for approval.
I've made the motion to approve. I need a second.
Was, is there a second on the motion to approve the CPA?
Well, I think it would be one of the people that, Commissioner.
It would have to be Commissioner Cameron Sepeda or Commissioner Myers.
Yes, exactly.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen and second by Commissioner Sepeda. Please record your vote.
I'm sorry, Madam Vice Chair, which item was this on again?
CPA 2126.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion failed two to four. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Cap Owen, and Wausser voted no.
Okay. Now we're back on the rezoning, the zoning modification.
Okay. Where are we?
I'm sorry, did we record the vote on the rezoning? Okay.
The clerk stopped you all record the last vote, right?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, ma'am?
Did you all record the last vote?
The last vote, yes.
And did you record the vote on the zoning modification on 20?
No, because we're not voting on it.
We did the CPA twice.
Yes, so we do need a vote on the rezoning in order to dispose of that item.
Move to deny.
Wait, wait, no. I'm not seconding that. You just, Adam, you just said that it, that we wouldn't take up the second item if the first item failed, I thought.
The second item, the rezoning without the comprehensive plan amendment is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. For procedural purposes, a vote will dispose of that. The rezoning is, without the comprehensive plan amendment, is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. So this would be a cleanup vote to dispose of the pending rezoning application.
Okay. Move to deny.
A second, second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp and second by Commissioner Wausser. Please record your vote.
Yeah, I just want to say on the record, the reason I'm now going to vote yes for this is because, Adam, it now became inconsistent in the course of the thing. I don't want to, I don't want to seem inconsistent.
Motion carried five to one. Commissioner Cameron Sepeda voted no.
Okay. So with all that being said, we're going to move to item CPA 2127. Planning Commission staff, am I correct? Planning Commission staff?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have for you this evening is item A3A. Ms. Carla Yanos will walk us through HC CPA 21-27.
Thank you.
Um, the next item we have for you this evening is item A3A. Ms. Carla Yanos will walk us through HCCPA 21-27. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Carla Yanos with Planning Commission staff, this is HCCPA 21-27, also known as Miller Road and State Route 60.
Can, can you hold up a minute, because we need to make sure our staff is on board with us? And maybe you all can get back with her after our meeting on, on this plan. Ms. Elise, can you allow my staff to, so we can continue with our public hearing, and you can get with them after the meeting on your issue, please? Thank you so much. We've already voted?
No, no, the, the...
I, I don't, I don't, I don't understand.
I think I would just wait for the applicant comes up for her presentation.
What I understand is the applicant is asking about a continuance of A3A and A3B, is that correct?
In order to modify the Comprehensive Plan...
The procedural question for the county attorney and county staff is, what would the appropriate procedure be to request a continuance to go back and modify the future land use category that we are asking for? And I was trying to save everyone a lot of time and energy tonight, rather than going through the testimony, to see if there was a procedural way that we could ask for that before the testimony.
So effectively, that is seeking to modify...
Yes, to a lower category.
Modify...
I would make a motion to allow for a continuance.
A second.
A motion by Commissioner Kemp, and second by Commissioner Owen, was that you, Commissioner Owen?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
And what I would understand here is that this would be continued to modify the, the, um, the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
To a lower intense category.
To a category, it'd be seeking a remand of the major modification to the zoning hearing master. We don't know the date for the Comp Plan Amendment, but we could pick a remand date now...
That's fine, and we would voluntarily renotice that, in order to make sure.
For the major modification, can remand it to a date certain, if that date needs to be extended, it can be extended, but there will be a six-month window after that continuance. Uh, I'm sorry, Comprehensive Plan associated, so, yes.
Thank you. Just trying to save time.
We'll get the remand date. We could remand this to April 17th, and that could be continued as, as needed, April 17th, 2023, at 6:00 PM.
Did we hear that, April 17th?
Yes.
6:00 PM?
Yeah, 6:00 PM. I mean, this is recognizing that they'll probably need more time, but this is, we have a remand date, and they can, it can be continued from there.
Okay. We had a motion by Commissioner Kemp, and second by Commissioner Owen, so let's record our votes, I don't think we recorded a vote. Yes. April 17th, at 6:00 PM.
Motion carried six to zero.
If you can please exit quietly, so we can continue with our meeting, we certainly appreciate it. Okay. Yes.
Thank you. The next item we have this evening is item A4. It's HCCPA 22-20, this is a future land use map amendment. I will turn it over to Andrea Papendrew, who will give us our presentation. Thank you.
Our staff, Brian? Brian? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners, Andrea Papendrew, Planning Commission staff. This is HCCPA 22-20, 12398 Bullfrog Creek Road. This is a privately initiated regular map amendment. Site is approximately 122.18 acres. The request is to go from suburban mixed-use six to residential nine. The site is in the urban service area, it is within the Riverview and Gibsonton community plans, and the South Shore Area Wide Systems Plan. This is an aerial of the subject site. The site is east of Bullfrog Creek Road and Interstate 75. It is mostly surrounded by vacant, single-family residential and HOA land. To the west is the Golden Aster Scrub Preserve and Trail. The existing use on site is agricultural, with a 73.85 acres of the site is a man-made lake. And then further northeast is a one, a light commercial use. So the adopted future land use category for the site is suburban mixed-use six. Suburban mixed-use six surrounds the site to the north and south. To the east is residential nine, and to the west is natural preservation. The proposal before you today is to change the residential nine future land use category. Moving from suburban mixed-use six to residential nine would increase density on site to 1,099 units. It would increase intensity on site to approximately 2.7 million square feet. If approved, urban-scale commercial uses would be permitted on site, and research corporate park and light industrial uses would no longer be permitted on site. Planning Commission staff sent this application to various reviewing agencies. No objections were received, however, a few comments were received in there, including your packet for your review. Plan amendment is consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, specifically future land use element policies on neighborhood and community development. Proposed plan amendment from suburban mixed-use six to residential nine would result in an increase in density and intensity that would be compatible with the development pattern in the surrounding area. Plan amendment is also consistent with Objective 13 and Policy 13.3, which indicate that new development shall not adversely impact environmentally sensitive areas and other significant natural systems. Property has a 73.85 acres of a man-made lake, and it qualifies for upland preservation. And the full list of these policies are in your packet. This is also consistent with the following three community plans. Site is in the residential district of Riverview, which encourages residential development that complements the surrounding district. The proposal would be a natural extension of the residential nine to the east of the site. All three plans have goals related to environmental protection and sustainability. As pre-listened noted, there's a large man-made lake, lake on the property, and there's potential for upland preservation and clustering on site. Planning Commission recommends the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. So that concludes this presentation, I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you. The applicant?
Good evening, Truro Gardner, 400 North Ashley Drive. We have something here that's hopefully lost, a lot less confusing and controversial as your, as your last matters. This is a CPA from SMU six to rez nine. It was found to be consistent by all reviewing agencies, including the Planning Commission. At the transmittal, we gave a full presentation, unanimous approval there, then traveled to all the different reviewing state agencies, no concerns reflected. And with that, I'm happy to stand down. We've got our whole team here, in case any questions come up, both in person and virtually, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, and each speaker has three minutes, and we only have one speaker. Mark? Mark? He's on the line?
He's with the development team.
Oh, he's with the development team?
Yes.
Commissioner, Mark has not checked in.
Okay. We don't have any public comments, so, board discussion?
I'll, uh, move approval. I'll, I'll tell you, I was a little concerned about the traffic just north of Big Bend Road when I was speaking with them earlier today. But to the west of all this is preserved land, I was just wondering about the nature and kind of checking my memory and everything. And then I saw going straight up along 301, I don't know what the, maybe the staff who talked to me earlier today, because it follows, the road goes up from Big Bend and this development and parallels 301, so that there's a way, that is apparently a pretty open and decent way to hit Sims Road. Do I have that?
Did you mean Bullfrog Creek?
Yes, thank you, I couldn't remember Bullfrog Creek Road, thank you. So, um, the, so, and we almost don't need that information, except I'll just put it on the record, because I was, was concerned until I could reassure myself on the map about that and the, um, uh, conditions for traffic in that area.
Thank you. Commissioner Owen?
I moved approval.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and Mr. Gormly, the, um, and just doing the math with the, with the density credits, you're, we're probably looking at, if you do 47 times nine, maybe around 420-something units, does that sound like a max amount, or?
That, that sounds like a, a rough, rough max, yes.
Yeah. And applicant, um, I know this is a rez nine, this will likely be apartments, you think? Or what do you?
So, it's a little bit confusing here, so there, the developer's actually coming in after this to file the PD.
Okay.
As you can see, there's a large water body, and so they're sensitively dealing with that. I would think it would have some multifamily component, just to be completely candid, but I could see also some residential as well. And again, this is rez nine, this is in a high-density...
Sure.
And, and I did also just want to clear, I know the, the, uh, the slide was shown with 1,099 units, we're, we're, we're not going anywhere near that, yes.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what confused me a little bit, but that, that kind of clears it up a little bit. So this is not my district, so Commissioner Myers have at it, and I'll, I'll defer to you, so...
Well, I always love to see my district be enhanced and improvement coming to my district.
And I will say, I appreciated Mrs., Commissioner Kemp's comment, Bullfrog Creek Road is on the west side of this property, and it provides a great access up to Sims, and then there's lots of different ways you can maneuver from there. So, this is a great situation where it literally is a budding 75. I think it's a wonderful transition piece, as you continue to go east of 75, and again, the west side of 75 is protected.
Commissioner Woster?
Thank you, Chair. So, this is one of the ones that I think, kind of quote-unquote gets people, where it comes through and it gets a rezone to a rez nine, but then, as Commissioner Owen pointed out, and, and the applicant pointed out, so they're, you're going to come back now, we're giving you an enhancement to nine, but you're going to come back with a PD, which will basically give you a rez what?
So, we cannot, we cannot be able to exceed the rez nine. And again, the details of that PD will have to be worked out, so you'll have another opportunity to vote on that PD, but again, this is from SMU six to rez nine, so we'll not be able to exceed nine units per acre.
Even with that, the, as we call it, the mathematical, what do we call it, Adam? The mathematical maximum, or?
Is that like the Ronald Reagan, the, the voodoo math? Is that the...
Yeah, but, I just want to make sure that, if it is going to be a rez nine, you know, that we've seen this kind of hook, where they get approved for one thing, but then they have this magical density bonus, and then it ultimately sometimes can go, allow them to, afford them an opportunity to be more than that, I want to...
There are, there are density bonuses that are available in the Comprehensive Plan. Those would be things that would be addressed at, at the time of zoning, but, but there are opportunities for, for different types of development that are, that are incentivized in the Comprehensive Plan to achieve higher density than the base future land use category.
Right, okay, that was my question and concern. Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Fiedman, I'd like just to clarify. So there is a wetland density bonus, so the upland acreage is times by 1.25, and that's used to times by the future land use category to get the number of dwell units. And while there is a large lake on this property, there's also wetlands, so that would also, that well-in area would be taken out of the total site for calculating density. So, well, Adam Gormley, I think we are looking at 420, that could be less if there are more wetlands on site, but we won't know until we get to the rezoning stage.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, and second by Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carried five to one, Commissioner Woster voted no.
That's it? Okay, that's it. Thank you all so much. Drive safely, have a good evening. Oh, what's this?